Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council. It's Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, at 6:30 in the evening, and fall has officially come here today. I want to give a special welcome to, uh, this is being livestreamed on Facebook, so, uh, hi folks on Facebook, uh, this is just like live, this is just like TV, so, for anybody watching at home, hello.
Do we have a second question?
When I was a kid, they would look and go, "Hi Johnny, hi Bobby, hi Mary," you know, and then at home we'd go, "They know me." It was black and white TV.
So we don't have a way in which we can censor comments?
Oh, thank you, thank you. Councilman? Oh, life goes so much better when you have writers and musical accompaniment. First of all, let's go to minutes, we have minutes from, uh, the September 26th in your, uh, packet, is that okay with everybody? Is that shaking the bed again?
I approve the next.
Thank you. Motion second, all of them signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Uh, visitor in public comment, uh, Mr. Patton, how's that for getting to you right away?
Ah, you're good. I'll give you 15 minutes.
Please, the three minutes.
I know.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the licensing changes you've got. I, I personally think that it's necessary, it will, you know, make the process work. You're not touching into the important parts of the license, I really am not sure why that was in there. And also licensing, I, I was looking around the other day and I found some articles, one of them sort of caught my eye, and it was Huntington in Oregon has imposed a marijuana business license, and their fee is $5,000 a year, and $5,000 renewable, so, it's pretty awesome. You might miss the whole source income there. These guys make as much money as they say they do. The other thing I, I'd like information on is, uh, we've been reading in the paper today how the Oregon finally kicked loose the tax money, and, uh, have we received, or do we know how much we receive, we were going to receive, and have we gotten yet? No, I thought we were...
I think, well, do you want me to respond to this? So the answer is, no, I don't know how much, but I do believe you've received, and I wish, but our finance director's not here tonight, so I can't, I've been asking the same question, so...
I bet you have.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I think we'd all like to hear that, and like to hear your comments on whether or not what's at the shore.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Patton, I have a question for you. You were one of the leading vocal voices.
Educators?
Oh, I don't think so. Relative to some of the engineering things about the marijuana plant for the growth side, what was your understanding as far as the noise testing? Who did you think was going to do the testing?
Well, the, uh, your guy that did the evaluation of the application, uh, misread severely the OD, the DEQ's requirements, and the standard practice is that if there's an issue that the Oregon environmental quality would do them, but I don't believe they're doing them anymore, and I would have expected that the applicant would have been required to have performed the initial testing, uh, under the direction of a licensed engineer in the field, and then the city, if there was an issue, or maybe even the applicant afterwards, I'm not sure, uh, repeat the testing under the direction of a licensed engineer.
Okay, but first it would be the applicant's responsibility to do the licensing.
Usually it's something like that, you have to do soil samples, the applicant does the soil sample.
Okay, I didn't know, I wanted to find out.
Did you know the air park is on their own?
I heard that, yeah.
And I think we shared with the city, I'm not sure, we did, but we have the damn point out there.
Okay, thanks so much, appreciate that. Any other visitor comments at this point? Yes, sir? Good evening, and welcome to council.
Well, thank you. My name's Donovan Bogdons, uh, I just wanted to address a comment that was made, not this last meeting, but had been made before by one of the city employees. Uh, he said something about, uh, he didn't know why people were getting upset over a little 2.5 percent water bill increase, and, uh, I think he may have mentioned something about how we spend hundreds of dollars on cell phones and things like that. My response to that would be, number one, buying a cellphone is a choice, this phrase is not. Uh, number two, um, if people aren't aware, there's a lot of citizens in this community that are on public assistance and, uh, or just over to where sometimes it's even worse when you can't get any assistance. And number three, uh, you know, if the 2.5 percent isn't very much, why not do a decrease, and let's see how that goes. But my other thing is, is it's not just a 2.5 percent water increase, it's a 2.5 percent water increase every year for the next five years, a 5.5 percent increase on our sewer bill every year for the next five years, it's seen our franchise fees going up on all our utilities, it's having some of the highest taxes in Polk County, and one of the things that I was thinking of also is, um, if all this stuff is going to pay for city services and things like that, I would think that would be covered by our property taxes, and I can write my property taxes off on my taxes and get some of that back, but if I'm paying for all these services through franchise fees and increases and paying for city halls and mine net and my water bill, I can't claim any of that, so I kind of feel like I'm, uh, kind of getting ripped off there. So, that's my response to his comment, and I kind of think in the future, if city employees or anybody else are allowed to make personal comments, we need to make the public comments available more often during the meeting.
Thank you, appreciate you taking the time to come in. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to continue moving forward on the agenda, and, uh, I think we have, uh, on the schedule here is the rate study update from, uh, Mr. Donovan.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have one thing under visitor comments.
Yes, oh, excuse me, please do.
Yes, um, the city council received some emails, um, from, um, resident Victoria Cooljack, and she asked that those be put in the official record under visitor comments, and so they are, I just wanted to let the council know they are. They are now part of the package.
Thank you, appreciate that, council members, that was elected, sent to you at the debate. Okay, thank you very much, Karen, I appreciate that. Um, I think we're doing, we're under, uh, rate study updates, what's listed on my agenda? Please. Good evening, Mr. Donovan, welcome to city council.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, Steve Donovan, 9600 Southwest Oak, Suite 335, Portland, Oregon, 97223. In your packets tonight is a draft final report for the rate study. This is pretty comprehensive, and, uh, what we've done tonight, can you put it on, Karen, on, uh, slide show moments? We've got a brief PowerPoint.
I don't have it.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Last month, we spent quite a bit of your time talking about the business plan for the utilities, and that was the definition of how much are we going to need to make the systems work. Tonight, we're going to talk about where do we get the money from to fund the plant, in other words, the rate side of the equation, which we're going to come back to tonight. So, the summary of monthly drives and recommendations, and we've got some good news for you tonight, by the way. Uh, we're going to talk about demand and customer demographics, who pays, and what your community is really made up of, who are, who are your customers? I'm not sure that you've all ever seen that in any extensive detail, but it's pretty interesting. And then, uh, we're going to show you two things, uh, my recommendation for the rate profile versus the cost of service analysis, what's mathematics of the plan call for the rates, and they're different, and I'll tell you why. And that'll be for both water and sewer, and then we'll talk about next steps. So, forecast of, uh, system changes and revenue requirements, and this will be our rate recommendation to you, and last month, we talked to you 2.5 percent on water, and last month, we said 5.5 percent on wastewater. Uh, we've got the good news on wastewater is it's going to be 4.15 percent, and the reason for that is, we had a meeting with the Oregon DEQ Clean Water State Revolving Loan Program three weeks ago, folks from, uh, the northwest region in Portland, plus Eugene, and you have been qualified, and your project has been placed on the intended use plan, and it will be funded with the DEQ SRF loan, which, uh, the manager will be coming back with a victory lap, I suspect, here pretty soon, a 30-year loan at 2 percent. Last month, we talked about a 20-year loan at 2.5 percent, so the stated rate on the loan is 1.48 percent, and the DEQ will charge one-half of 1 percent fee on principal outstanding for an effective rate of 1.98 percent. So, well done, uh, this is, this is very good, and it brought the rate profile down a full 1.35 percentage points over the five-year term, as the gentleman had just said, so, this is a very good development, and, uh, we're real pleased. You have qualified for the small community program versus what I had shown last month was the overall program, the retail side of their program. So let's talk about demand and who your customers are. Uh, water, there are a total of 2,440 water meters in service, and all of those meters, as you can see here, the preponderance, 95 percent are residential meters, you are a monolithic customer base, you don't have a diversified breakdown between residential, commercial, and industrial, like, uh, a large Seattle or San Francisco or Portland would have, you are effectively a single-family residential community. Uh, the balance of the meters are multifamily and industrial, and you have that, see that one six-inch meter, that's actually a, a large apartment complex here in town. Water sales, this is 1617, uh, you sold 35.4 million cubic feet of water, that's 265 million gallons, for those spatial people out there, and that's the equivalent of 401 Olympic swimming pools full of water that you sold to customers. Now, as I said, 95 percent of the meters in service are three-quarter inch, 99.4 percent of the water is sold to in-city customers, a very small amount is sold outside, this is very common. 43 percent of all the water is sold between June and September, now, this is important because there is seasonality to water, and that makes sense, in the summertime, you sell more, more water than in the winter. So, in one-third of the year, you generate 43 percent of your water revenues, that's why last month I was harping on you, you're on 90 days of operating revenues as a reserve, that's for the seasonality issue. Citywide peaking factor, now, this is extremely important from an engineering standpoint, is 1.465, and I'm going to speak to that a little more detail, uh, on why peaking factors are important. First of all, what is a peaking factor? It's the ratio of the maximum month daily demand divided by the average annual daily demand, and the reason this is important from a planning standpoint is, the higher the peaking factor, the more we have to invest in storage to keep steady, to meet that simultaneous peak demand, and when we talk about that simultaneous peak demand is, the hottest day of the year in August, having fire on both sides of town, having irrigation supply, and keeping 20 pounds of hydrostatic pressure in the system at all times, that calls for a lot of storage. If we can bring that peak down, we can mitigate the future capital investments, like your customer was talking about, it's 2.5 percent per year, every year, if we can mitigate the demand on the system, we can mitigate the future capital improvements required on the system. Now, what this chart shows is the peaking factors of communities in the western Oregon where I have done the rate studies, and I know these peaking factors are correct, and yours is very low, and what that leads me to believe is two things, there's a demographic factor here, that, uh, there are folks that have fixed incomes and probably don't water their lawns in the summertime, mitigating that peak, and then second, the preponderance of your, your lots are fairly small relative to the large suburban lots that we see out there, but if you'll notice the two bars, the long ones with the very high peaking factors, Dallas in 2011 and Silverton in 2007, those peaking factors are sort of outside the norm, it's because when we did those rate studies, those communities made policy decisions to lower their water rates in the summertime. Their thinking was, we want to give customers a break because they use a lot of water in the summer, so we'll lower the rate. Well, that's counterintuitive to what we're trying to achieve here, we're trying to conserve water so that we can manage the system better, and both of those communities have since changed their rate structures to have, uh, either flat rates all through the year, or what we call converted block rates, where the more you use, the more you pay as you go out across that demand curve. So, total wastewater active customers, 2,220 residential and multifamily EDUs, equivalent dwelling units, those are the demand units equivalent to a single-family home. Uh, we have three residential EDUs outside the city, that is rare, most communities from an urban services standpoint require that if you connect to our sewer system, you must annex to our city, so this is, yeah, it's not a lot of them, but it is, it's rare, usually that's a condition of, of connection. Uh, 147 commercial EDUs, so 2,370, and you'll say, well, do we have the same number of water connections that we have sewer connections? The answer's no, it's, it's very common that they're different. 94 percent are residential, 6 percent are commercial. Uh, this is a little geeky, uh, but it's important when we talk about the wastewater system and we're, uh, doing a mass balance on, on the system, and what this looks at is, and we've sent this on to the city's engineers, we have the luxury of interrogating the billing system, so we have a very good idea of how much wastewater people, how much water people purchase from you and then ended up in the wastewater system, plus, we also know from, uh, reports at the wastewater treatment plant, how much water actually came to the wastewater treatment plant, so we can do a balance of, obviously, what I'm driving at here is, we know what we put into the system metered, and we know what we got at the plant, the difference has to be infiltration and inflow, and that's an extremely important issue because it's a very high cost to you, and as you can see here, uh, 360 million gallons were shown up at the wastewater treatment plant, but only 226 million came from customers, so 63 percent of all the flows that went to the wastewater treatment plant were from customers, and 37 percent was from, uh, infiltration and inflow. So what that means on a flow basis is, for every gallon that we put into the system, 1.58 gallons showed up at the plant, that's the ratio, and now you say, okay, Steve, so what, what does that mean? Well, that's actually pretty darn good for communities your size, and that reflects the fact that over, since the 1980s, you've invested heavily in IONI abatement, and for all of those interceptors, Mayor, you might remember, used to have interceptors that ran along the river, those interceptors were decommissioned, and pump stations were put in to intercept that flow and get it away from those low-lying wet areas, so we weren't taking groundwater back to the plant. That's a very good thing. From a BOD, from an organic material standpoint, uh, we had 518,000 pounds of BOD show up at the plant, 100, 378,000 pounds came from customers, so 73 percent of the pounds came from meter consumption, 27 percent came from IONI, and then from total suspended solids, it's even better, 94 percent came from the customer class, 6 percent came from IONI. This is, like I say, pretty geeky, but what I wanted to find out, because I'm, when I built the rates, I'm charging you for IONI, and it's one of the most expensive components of the sewer business, is not treating the wastewater, it's pushing the water around, it's pumping water from here to there, it's storing water, all those lagoons, all that cost, that's all related to storing and handling water, and from, uh, from this chart, what you can see here is, uh, the strength of the sewage that shows up at the wastewater treatment plant is actually weaker than the wastewater that we put into the system, because IONI dilutes, dilutes the strength of the wastewater, and that's also fairly common in this business. Now, let's talk about, uh, recommended water rates versus the cost of service analysis. The gentleman had said, that came up here, and he rightfully so, said, uh, costs of water are going up, and they're going up every, every year, and your current customer with 10 CCF, that's 1,000 cubic feet of water that he uses on a month, is $63.80, that's eight tenths of one cent per gallon.
Is that, is that where our average, average customer uses? What's your average customer uses?
He's paying eight tenths of one cent per gallon for the water. I think that's, that's good value, I, but that's, once again, uh, something for you to consider. Now, this blue line is the cost of service analysis rates, and what the cost of service analysis indicates is that instead of that customer paying $63.80 a month, based on the plan that we showed you last month, we should raise that rate up to $74.34, so, but look at the shape of that curve, we would raise this guy's bill 10 bucks a month, and then pretty much hold it flat for five years. We don't need to do that, and the reason it's being flat is, the costs of the plan you saw last month were going up, but you didn't see what the customer base was doing at that time, and we've got the customer grace base growing at about 2 percent per year, so, even though the numerator is growing, the denominator is growing also, which is mitigating that quotient, so why on earth could we raise somebody's rate 10 bucks a month and then hold that rate flat for five years? Well, I would make that recommendation if you were in trouble, if you weren't making your bond covenants, or if you didn't have any reserves, and neither of those cases are true, you are making your bond covenants, and you do have reserves, so what I suggest you consider doing, and my recommendation, is we follow that 2.5 percent per year glide path. By the end of the fifth year, we're approaching our cost of service level, but we're doing it at a more rational level, and that blue line assumes that every dollar that's in the plan is expended when the plan says it is, and every project that's in the plan gets built when it says, that never happens, and you've got reserves, and you've got planning in your pocket, so that I think the red line makes a whole bunch more sense versus running up to the cost of service analysis, but at the end of the fifth year, we're approaching that, that same point. For the wastewater, current customer pays $45.99 a month for unlimited use of the wastewater system. Your rates are, are, are flat for the residential customers, 95 percent of your customers, so that's unlimited use of the wastewater system for $45.99 a month. Now, you can see, the cost of service base rate profile says we should run that up to $54.41, so we'll raise it about $8.50 a month. Once again, you don't have to do that, but the interesting thing about the blue line here is, you can see, even though we've got the customer base growing, it is starting to trend upward, not severely, but it is trending upward, that's because we're going to be taking on debt, that we talked about last, last month, we will be taking on debt in the future, that's going to be adding to your cost profile in excess of your growth rate, so that the unit charges will grow over time based on the cost of service analysis. But at 4.15 percent per year, less than what we talked about last month, we'll get you there, uh, by the end of the fifth year, in a, a much more manageable fashion, so the red line is, is our recommendation to you. So, next steps, we're going to finalize the water and wastewater report, we've got a draft on the report now, we will have, will take a week to accept comments, and then I'll give the report to the manager, and he'll probably post it on the website, I suspect. Continue work on acquisition of the senior mainstream alignment river water rights, and I know you're making progress on that area, and then, uh, you're going to see a snowstorm of paperwork coming your way with respect to this Clean Water State Revolving Loan. Now that you're on the intended use plan, you will fall into, into the next cycle of approval, and you'll have to have, uh, your, your loan documents presented, it'll be just like taking out a mortgage, you've done this before, this isn't new to you, uh, and as I said, it'll be a 30-year loan, effectively at 2 percent interest, and you've been approved for $5,966,930, which is the phase one project, and it almost hits entirety. And then, uh, our recommendation is to you, on January 1, 2018, you raise water rates 2.53 percent across the board, and 4.14 percent for wastewater. Thank you.
Questions for the presenter?
What that breaks down to, because I was sitting here doing the math through my own pocketbook, is $4.26 a month for both services.
Is that right? Is she fine?
Just a reminder, we will be coming back to you, we will accept the report with any comments that you may have, but we will be coming back to you in our normal cycle in December for a recommended, uh, the, the actual resolution to, uh, address rates and have a public comment on those rates at that time.
And this will be done, the same way it's been done in the past, where every year we'll look at it again, and look at other financial situations, and...
Exactly, but absent changes, dramatic changes to what is going on in our spending and our revenue streams, this is what you can expect, roughly expect, year in, year out, for the next four to five years.
And that's probably why last month, I had such a pain in your neck talking about, you need to get this plan, because we can't make rates until we have a plan, well, now you've got a plan, and now deviations from the plan can be evaluated against the plan, and, uh, that's, that's kind of how you run a business.
Yes, sir. Well, he didn't say anything about how we could reduce the cost. First, we have to make an assumption, and that is, we need the water, the drinkable water, and, uh, we need to do what we're doing, and we need to have more sewer capacity, so we've established that need, as long as everybody's in agreement with that, then the question will be, what about doing things that we, so we don't have to do that? I know you, that 27 to 37 percent water leaking into our sewer system, you said that doesn't sound bad, I think it sounds terrible, and, and especially at a time when I can feed cable through a pipe, I can take pictures, right, I should be able to know where it's coming from, unless there's somebody illegally dumping, which I don't think is the case, so, but, isn't that something that, uh, I know we looked at before, we were doing that on, on...
Yes, so, that is correct, and, and we do address all of those issues, and we do that with our master planning processes, so we do a 20-year facility plan for each facility, and we also do a five-year capital plan, he's, Steve's job is not necessarily to dissect that plan to see if we're making the correct choices, we do that together with you during, during the budget cycle, we do that with our engineers, and with our, and with our staff, so you, we are, we are fully conscious of both the cost of IONI and in the wastewater system leakage of the water system, but we're also fully conscious of what our priorities need to be in terms of keeping our costs, overall costs down. You can spend a lot of money chasing a leak without having a, a, a major impact on the cost of building business, so what we have in our capital plan is choose the, the most cost-effective routes to make the biggest dent in our long-range costs as opposed to addressing everything. IONI, the valley is IONI, I mean, we receive, within the people, where, we're, we're accepting between 10 and 11 times the volume of water in our, in our wastewater plant versus the amount of water we put through in our water system, that it just leaks, that's the nature of our historic systems, so we're spending money, and, you know, we sit down with our engineers, we sit down with you on an annual basis at budget time, and go through the, the capital planning, and that's exactly what we're trying to do, is figure out where we can put limited resources to make the most bang for the buck.
Seven million dollars, sir, or more isn't limited. I'll take the word for it, I'm not, I'm not a sanitary engineer, or whatever it is, but to me, running a cable down a pipe and doing it in a systematic way makes sense.
We would be happy, and I think it's probably more a study session format, but we would be happy to bring our engineers back for a conversation about planning and how the resources are allocated over the course of the planning cycle, just because that would be work there for all the development of those plans, but I think the whole council maybe would like the refresher as well, so if you'd like that in a future study session, we're happy to do that, bring the engineers in and have that conversation.
Sure, as long as they're open-minded and willing to, willing to share what opportunities are...
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else, yeah? Okay, let's keep moving forward, thank you very much for coming in, appreciate the presentation, please. Uh, we're now down to reports and presentation for, and, uh, so I guess I get the, the first one, uh, just to keep people informed, uh, in two, a little over two years, there will be a census, and, uh, it's very important for counting everybody, and, uh, that is a process that takes some years in advance to do, uh, at the, the Polk County mayors, city managers, and county commissioners, and related government officials, we, we had a presentation by Todd on, uh, the census and, uh, preparation for the census, and it does take, uh, it does take a lot to get, make sure you count everybody, and, uh, in our last census, because of some efforts that we took here, we were able to pick up a number of people who normally wouldn't have been picked, uh, counted, so, uh, that's an ongoing process, uh, and it's, uh, it's pretty important, you'll probably hear us You'll probably hear us talk a little bit more about the census coming up and the incoming months that are coming here. So just letting you know that. Other part is, recently, I know several councilors were able to attend the League of Cities Conference in Portland, where the 241 cities, I think 145 or so cities were represented, and 500 to 600 mayors and city council members were there, and Councilor Martin Candler, Mayor Martin Ross were able to attend, and I was pleased to be able to do a presentation there. A lot of good stuff happened, and we were able to recognize some wonderful people, so I just wanted to, and I should also, City Manager Klein was also in attendance. So, thank you. For folks, it'll be next September, it's a good place to go, it's a very good learning opportunity. Mr. City Manager, I think you have the next portion of our agenda.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. So, in response to the concern that was raised earlier, I just want to say that I do, you know, unfortunately he's not here to hear this, but I do apologize for the comments that were made, and I think it became a training opportunity, and it's been addressed. So, you know, we're not insensitive to what the impact on anybody is of what these rates do, you know. I, I for one live in this community like you do, and so I've experienced it in my own household. So, you know, we would love to keep it flattery and reduced if it was possible to do so, but honestly, it's not. So, yeah, and the mayor's right, goes at the League of Cities Conference as well. We had a lot of interesting sessions. Frankly, it was a very good conference. I think Councilor Morton was there as well, and, no, and Councilor, thank you, Councilor Morton was there as well, yes, you were. So I think we have a lot of great sessions there. There was a lot that I was able to participate or attend with respect to homelessness and affordable housing. There was some tours in Portland. One of the tours that I went on was the actual facilities they have in place. It's, you know, frankly, very heartbreaking on the one hand, but it's also sort of interesting to see how the issues are at least being addressed in Portland, that there's some, there is some management of the problem. That said, it really is a much bigger problem than cities, and even state resources are able to effectively address. We really need a partner in the federal government for the problem. But that said, you know, there are things going on. We, of course, you know, we too have engaged in that discussion, and will be more, doing more so with the council of governments and their new staff hiring, and that's the plan. So, that's ongoing. Anyway, it was, it was an excellent conference, and you know, well worth the price of attendance. So, oh, by the way, the, those of you, I think everybody's there for the Dune Time presentation on Saturday of the Lincoln Portrait, did an amazing job, and he will be here in our community sometime around Presidents' Day, I think at the high school, at the high school auditorium, so in the evening. So in fact, they made two appearances in Polk County. I think the Heritage Museum, Polk County Heritage Museum is also arranging an appearance. It's a wonderful, wonderful presentation, the Portrait, definitely worth seeing. We are good to go with the Mechanico project. We were paid, agreed to the terms as council presented them, so we're off and running. They, you know, we will, so expect full payment next September. So let's see, the old city hall, we have received, we will receive, and there's a hearing, we expect to receive, there's a hearing in Bank of C on the, at the end of October. We think that would be the final hearing on this matter, and we should receive some partial payment on the judgment that we have outstanding on the prior tenancy on that project. We expect to get permission this month from ODU to proceed on S Street Bridge, that's a $2 million grant, two to three years to see that through to completion. So that's ongoing. Couple different things, let's see, in the field of engineering, we have, the water rights work is ongoing, we've received the executed agreements, so we will be starting the diligence process sometime either by towards the end of this fiscal year or the beginning of next. We expect to have a close on that agreement, have to come up with remainder balance and acquire that, those water rights, and we're anxious to get that done for the future of the community. We have a request for proposals for an engineer of record for the city. That's a little bit new, that is part of the reorganization. When we eliminated the position of community development director, we brought in contract planning, and we are bringing in a contract engineer to do the work that was otherwise sort of within one department. We still, we've always had contract planning, it's a little bit more intense now than it had been, and we're adding the engineer of record to do the engineering work, so that'll be on an hourly consultant basis. That RFP is out there, and we will, we will have an engineer, an evidence to you for approval toward, I think, to November 6th evening, is what we have that scheduled. Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what our timing is. So talked about that. We've, we're expecting plans and processing that, and the hotel work that's moving forward. We will have something in front of the Planning Commission in early November, they will come back to you, we think, in your November 20...
The second meeting.
Second meeting, whatever that date is, I can't remember in front of me, but the second meeting of November. So the Planning Commission will have a special day for their hearing because of the notice requirements. They'll be back to you a week, about a week later for your consideration, certainly of plan, well, regardless of whether the Planning Commission approves or disapproves. It'll be designed to your calendar. So that's coming forward. The development team is pressing to inform quickly, they're anxious to get started, and of course, we're anxious to have them get started, so that's all good news. So we're working with them closely. Tree training starts next week, notes went out in October, the rivers to be briefed, and we expect two to three weeks and five W, five Alderman Works employees for completion of this effort. So that's clearing up sidewalks of low-hanging trees and streets of low-hanging trees, so there's been a lot of work, that'll be a lot of work. The rear review of sewer listation upgrade projects, that's final review of signed bid documents, and that will be going out as part of the overall package of improvements that will be coming to you in short order. That was what Steve was talking about, that $5.9 million worth of loan funds that have been approved by state. I believe that loan included a forgivable portion, so that's also, there's a, basically is a grant sign, you know, show up as a forgivable loan. So we've had a number of people participate in diversity training this week as well, this past week, and I think that went, I think that was an eye-opener for several of that, and I think that was good. Not that their eyes weren't open, suggests otherwise. I think it's, it's an intense training process. I went through it last year, it's really, it shows you things about yourself you didn't realize. It doesn't sound so great either, but anyway, it was good training. I'm just looking here and finding this streetland I've reported to you. Airstream event, those of you who assume were in town on Saturdays, on that, that I think went off really great, and I think, and we have good news, looks like they're coming back next year. That was a really fun event, that was nicely done, and they really showed well. Well, I loved a little fire pit on the plaza, that was, that was kind of interesting. Anyway, that's going, I don't know if I... Sean spoke on broadband in Conoverston, Haiman, I don't know?
Hammond.
Hammond, I don't know where that one is.
I know the falls.
There you go. And watching the municipal fire system, they want someone to talk about how rural, rural communities can utilize broadband. And then just in general, we're seeing tons of activity downtown with business, buildings and development, someone that will engage in our conversation later. So, that's my brief of my report. Anything I can, any questions I can add from this point? I think I have the next one as well.
Okay. Let's continue moving forward.
This is in, that is landing report, and actually, I'm going to ask Sean and Steve, we're both are project, are project, are joined to join up here for any questions, but let me reopen, like, I'm glad to get to that report. But what you have is, you know, my period I had to report to you about the status of the project and related work, with private and the public work. Now I've added the hard work to that as well. I'm not going to repeat what's in my, in my staff report. I know there, I know there were some questions about, we have a specific request to you about the IFA loan funds, this was, we thought to you that about this a little before, but I know we're going to test your memory a little on that, so we're going to repeat that information to you here, and why we chose the way we went, and I'll let Sean, excuse me, address the particulars of that request to you. And again, we have Steve here, if you have any questions, particularly about the work that's ongoing, which is pretty much wrapping up in your short order. So, I'll let Sean finish the piece on the funding as well.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, it has been a while since we first started this infrastructure effort, so I want to kind of step back, and when we first approached you about doing this infrastructure work, our cost estimate projection was $3.5 million. What we ended up doing is we're looking at these special public works fund, which is where we got our loan financing from. They have kind of one process up to $3 million, and once you get over $3 million, a much more extensive and time-consuming process for approval of the financing. With that in mind, we looked at our scope of work, and essentially said, is there a good way to split this project into two phases to get it under $3 million? And really, we felt like there was, because there's a lot of the underground that the base work needs to get done right up front, but then there's a lot of the finishing work that frankly is better done after the development is in place or as it's being finalized, so you don't have equipment running over, you know, sidewalks and landscaping and things like that. So, we ended up moving forward with the first phase, which was, which was under $3 million. We were the beneficiaries of frankly, a very good bidding client, we got really good bids, and so we were able to get the originally projected work done and significantly more. It was good enough that we started looking at it going, okay, can we get everything that we wanted to get in Phase 1 and 2? So from there, we essentially developed, took that up and developed a list of kind of the, there were some other issues that came up along the way, primarily revolving around parking in the downtown and being able to create additional public parking downtown. So we took everything that we originally looked at doing, factored in those new issues, and then basically ran through a kind of a wants and needs analysis, you know, what has to get done, and what would be nice to get done if we, if we have the capacity to. The result of that is what's in front of you tonight. We did, so I'll walk through it real quick. You have essentially the, all the work you see this been done so far, that's in the contracted column. The work remaining to be done, as I mentioned, is primarily related to parking. So we have the old city hall parking lot that does not include demolishing the city hall, essentially repaving, creating a little bit of landscaping in that parking lot. We have the Lot 7 parking lot, which is behind the basements and the Elks. That was part of the agreement that we made with the Main Street property, ours, our access to the, to the property, that would be a public parking lot. There's some U.D. charging, lighting, and landscaping relating to those parking lots as well, and then a portion of a water line on D Street, which will help really loop in the, both in this landing, Main Street businesses to deliver more water, and it will also benefit the independent station property, which as you know, is also getting ready to kick off. There's another sort of column or category below that, which is some drainage improvements on lots 1 through 4. Those are, that's work that we are continuing to withhold, because as I said, we don't want to do sidewalks landscaping, you know, some of the fine details on the development side of Osprey Lane at this time. We'd rather let them run around with their heavy equipment than without having our nice finished product there to swish. So, for lack of a better term. So that's really what, how this breaks down. I would note, we left off about $750,000 worth of other projects relating to, you know, the street morgue, kind of fishing, the Main Street streetscapes, you know, the old city hall streetscape, things like that, that we really liked to be able to do, we just didn't feel like we're justified at this time with this particular process. All that to say, coming back to your original, your original request, that, you know, we do, we can get all this work done for basically a total cost of, we're asking to bump up to 2.9 million from 2.65. The, we still feel like this is a great savings, frankly, because our original estimate was $3.5 million. There's a little bit of, it can be a little tricky, because we did also get a $250,000 grant, which I'm not kind of factoring into this, but that's the request before we use to bump up our, our special public works fund fee as a request by an additional $250,000 to cover the last, these last pieces to finish the project.
Questions for staff?
Yes. When I add up all the items in yellow, it adds up to $850,000? 840, excuse me.
And 60, and then 61?
60,000 contingency.
That wasn't yellow.
It wasn't?
Yeah.
Okay. If you're asking for a bump up of $250,000 additional, how does that drag with the 840 that's on there?
So, committed dates, 2.349, so if you add that in together, those numbers, you have a stat, you add up to 3.1...
You add up the 3.249, which is a little down there.
Right, so you add the 250.
So there's money left in the original loan amount that you haven't spent?
Yes, yes, we have not completely spent out, the original 2.65.
Yeah, a portion of also, that's, that's income from bond funds, remaining water bond funds that have been reprogrammed for the D Street water line.
Yeah, so the...
So that's what the numbers look entirely.
Yeah, the D Street water line is listed as $240,000, but all of that will not be put against this special public works fund in the city.
Okay. I, frankly, my opinion is that we have spent a lot already on this, and if we can do this in chunks in an extended timeframe and be able to handle it through either grants, or as you say, there was a $250,000 grant not factored in, the $240,000 for the water line is going to possibly come out of some other funding, or there's other funding available. I'd rather see the cap not keep going up and up on this. I think we can time these things differently and fund them differently than adding more to this.
With regard to the grant, you assume, you know, the grant total contracted items, 1, 3, 5, reference is 3.29 million, so that does include the $250,000 grant. Essentially, what we do is when you back out that 250, back out another $100,000 for the water lines for the water line, and that will get you to the 2.9.
Okay. Well, I'm, you know, we just had a presentation that there's going to be a $5 million bump for the, for the sewer planning, and I know that's apples and oranges, but it's still money out of pocket.
So let me say that there's some different things. So one, much of this money is going to the lot, what we're calling Lot 7, you know, it's a lot of, very much on Lot 7. So that's the agreement we just struck with the Elks, the Masons, and the individual property owners to put in parking behind Main Street. So you're asking that we not do that work now?
Did we strike the agreement with them based on city council approving more loan?
We struck the agreement based on the council doing the parking lot, the city doing the parking lot as part of this overall project. So pulling that now, I think would be bad faith.
Okay.
The D Street water line helps is, it's matched by bond funds, we need to spend those funds anyway, and it also supports, it supports both improved water service in town and frankly, supports independent station as part of that work to get that project completed. The, I'm looking to see if this is going to get really, I guess, street preschool landscape is what we think that if you're going to do a parking license, you should complete the look of the, complete the look, and that's really a small piece of this.
Question?
The other work, excuse me, the other work is contracted, is contracted work with development where all the four, the three to four items below Lots 1 through 4, we're required to do that under development. So there's very little we can take off the table at this point. And again, all this was within the original budget, it was all presented to you, it was strategic in how we, how we timed it, but this is less than what we told you, this is less than what we told the state. So at this point, that's how we built the entire project and performed. It doesn't really make sense to take anything of this off the table, frankly.
So let me ask a question, because there was a question about hunking and timing, because this is all not simultaneous, is that correct? Because, because as you pointed out, some of the, some of this is getting the financing all in place, and then so some of this is going to happen earlier, and then some of it's going to happen later, later.
Actually, most of it will happen in the context of one contract, which is, other than the development approval. than the development improvements. But those things that are above the Lot 1 through 4, we expect to put that out in one contract, and you can say that we expect to save money by doing so. If we separate these out into separate contracts, one, we may not have the funding source available, and two, we will always have mobilization each and every, each and every in project that will be an added cost. I would assume that we get somebody in.
I was putting the yellow, the top yellow group and the bottom of the yellow group. That was, that was what I was asking as opposed to individual landscaping.
Well, and 1 through 4 isn't even yellow down here.
Oh, well, okay, so the two yellow groups. That was just what I was checking up the front of. Other questions if people have?
I have a question about, about the parking lot behind the City Hall. We haven't really made a decision what we're doing with the property anywhere else. We're really just, what we want to do there is freshen up, resurface, re-strike, redesign the flow of traffic in that lot, just so it becomes an adequate, you know, public parking lot, signage and some landscaping over there, just to, so that we have, you know, a decent public parking lot that we employ people to. Right now, it's cracked pavement, we have a problem with, we need to do something about the tree that's between us and the posts, so it's opportunity to solve the problem that there, add to the parking inventory that we desperately need downtown, and a hundred thousand, just really not very much.
Except that wasn't in the original plan for this project, was it?
You could pull it.
Yeah, so, and I guess I would add, we have, you know, through previous conversation, you know, when we've been talking to folks about the old City Hall, we've been saying that we're going to retain that back parking lot, and that's a separate tax law, and we want to retain that for public parking. So, that, the disposition of the old City Hall shouldn't affect one way or the other, that back parking area, and then as you said, the idea was to basically invest in it and get that back up to par and turn it into a true public lot.
And I would add that if you're in an oldest, you'll be on the hook for the repayment of this city general funds.
Still, still the general pocket, isn't it?
It's the incremental tax finance that we get off the project development. Counselor Teck, did you get the question answered?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions from the side of the room? Anything else from staff?
So, the way the loan is structured is, is it one of those that you borrow what you need and pay that, or you borrow a chunk and pay it back?
We borrow, so we, when we've done, when we've completed the work, that starts the clock on the money that we've borrowed. That's the first three, we have a, we have a, basically a window of interest only, and then after three years, we have, you know, principal and interest, and that continues on at that point in time. So, we have a
And I believe there's a
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say, I think more to your question, you know, so if we are approved for 2.9, and we only spend 2.7, then we only have a loan for 2.7.
Yes, yes, that, yeah. But though, it's Like, you're going to start from the beginning, you had a version of a loan when you're done.
So, let me make sure I, so if I was to state this, let me see how, I want to make sure. So, what we, what the original project came in at one level. We've had additional savings from a variety of reasons, and you chunked it so that we would get the best situation. And then, so while we're still under what was originally discussed in the, at the very beginning, we're able to get all the, all the pieces that we wanted, and we, so we were cautious up front, and then so, we now have the opportunity to get all the pieces that we wanted to have done, and still be under what we had originally discussed for the total cost of the project, and doing it with all the right, the correct bells and whistles. Is that?
I think that's a fair, that's a fair summary.
Okay.
Won't you have to go back and get some more money to be able to do the curbing and the stuff that's required for lots five through eight or nine?
That work is actually done. So, that's what's done on the east side of Osprey, or west side of Osprey Lane. It's the east side that we've left undone at this point in time, pending the development plans, and the developer doing his work. Some private developer will come in on lots five, six, seven, and maybe eight, and if there's changes that need to be made, it will be made at their nickel.
And it'll be relatively small and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So, the total stuff, it isn't done because we don't know exactly what's going to happen.
Right, and we don't want to waste, waste the work at this point in time.
Additional questions for staff? Okay, councilors, this is a, an action item. Someone will suggest action. Mike?
I move to approve resolution number 17 dash 1465.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Is there discussion? I hear no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose.
No.
Okay, Counselor Morton gives a no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, I think you have the next item.
This is informational, and it's available to act on this evening if you choose to, but this was, in essence, we took what we understood your, your direction on possible changes to the code language for the marijuana licensing, and so, I'm going to just pull the staff report very quickly. They're fairly limited, so those changes are limited essentially to pulling out the information relative to criminal histories that are submitted to, that are already submitted to the state. What we're looking for is the certifications instead that the businesses' certus are available, so this is requiring that those be available to us, those certifications from the state. It removes from the ordinance requirements, the testing laboratories, as, I don't believe that was your intent, to measure to have them under, and then it also eliminates the O D requirements on the retail land, at the retail premises for both medical and recreational marijuana. Again, it's, I think, as we've learned in the process, that was really not relevant. Other than that, it makes very few changes. I think you heard earlier that from one gentleman from the airpark, he did not have concerns with it, and we recognize that's where a lot of these concerns are coming from, and we want, so it's good to be on track with that. So, I think this is available to you to act on if you choose. If you want to mull it over more, give us further direction, we're happy to take that, otherwise you can, you're welcome to act on that this evening, and Karen will supply the language.
There were a couple of people who are in the marijuana business very locally that were, came out and talked about this. Has this been ran by them? I'd like, I'd like to hear what they had to say about it.
We have not passed a draft of this back to them, and we think we addressed the issues that were raised. So, I think that's helpful, and I don't care.
Well, we can do that, but I think some of us might be able to add, because several of us, well, I'm going to go with Counselor Morton first, and I think you can answer your question.
Three things. First of all, thank you to Mr. Patton for coming in and making his comments, because that was helpful to hear. I don't want to characterize this, that only the airpark had objections to things, or that was mainly the source of the comment. I think they were, they were maybe the more vocal group, but probably expressing what a lot of other people had thought, whether they live in the airpark or not. And third, after our last meeting where this was brought up, I did go spend, and I'm sure there's all kinds of rumors running around town now, but I went and spent a morning at the dispensary, so I could watch business being done and under what protections they had in place, what kind of process they went through with the buying and selling, the labeling, the restrictions that were put on, the way that the, the security had to be maintained throughout, and also had a continuing discussion with the owner of the business. And I was extremely impressed with how tight it is and how careful everything is, and there are licenses all over the walls saying that this person has been certified and that person has had training, and also that we did talk about, because it had been that person that had been in here in the meeting prior, expressing concerns about that. And when, when I continued my discussion with her, she was very much on board with the changes that we were talking about, because what it was eliminating was dual processes that were already done for the state and did not necessarily need to be done a second time for the city. So, I felt like there was a good agreement, and like I said, I was impressed at the care with which business is done.
I'm going to follow that. I also went over at a separate meet, a separate time, and had very similar experience, and asked about reporting on employees and how it handled and what's covered and when you have to report things. And then I had the opportunity to visit with the O L C C folks directly and ask, and they do not share their information. They said they can't, because it's the same law that they can't, and, but that if, that they issue a certificate that says this person's okey-dokey, technical term. And I felt real good, real good about that, and, you know, the rest didn't probably restate what the current council
I talked to O L C C at Lady Organs, also, and that was very affirmative.
Right, and so, it seems to, seemed to make sense to all parties, and, you know, there's no reason to duplicate. Additional questions for staff? Well, maybe one for you. One of my questions was about the O L C C or the Organ Health Authority. If it's a business that's not in good standing, do they kind of notify the city that, you know, we're having trouble, we're having issues with this business, or how does that work? I don't, I'm going to look at somebody else who probably has a better answer, but I know that they, they jump on, for their, they jump on this pretty hard, is my impression, but I don't, I didn't ask that exact question. I'm going to look, Chief doesn't have any additional. And I'm not, I'm not sure, Mr. Klein, do you have any additional?
I don't have any.
My impression, though, is that they're pretty hardcore on this stuff, and all the way around, and because they know they're under the microscope everywhere.
My guess, and it's purely bad, is that the state would work directly with the business, but I don't know that they are prone to share a lot of information with us, that they don't have to.
Yeah.
Well, I recall when we had the representative of the business, one of the questions that I had asked was, in the event that one of their licensed employees has some sort of a violation, is that then revoked somewhere about the Child Care Registry? And we got an affirmative response to that. So, we know that if there are problems with staff, that that staff would then, on revocation, be removed from the business. I think that's your first line of defense in having business issues. Get rid of that, see.
Is there, well, I, you know, I feel that we're on the right track, that this looks pretty good. I did have a couple of technical questions. We talked about exempting testing and laboratories, but if we envisioned a facility that grew some of their own plants to test, how would that be covered, or would that be covered as a grow operation, or?
Again, I don't know the answer. I think that, you know, at some point in time, that distinction would have to occur.
I don't think it's allowed.
You know, I don't know that it's even allowed, frankly, if, as a testing operation. It'd have to be licensed under the state's testing rules, you know, to basically license as a testing facility. So, again, I don't, you know, if it's, if it's available, if they can do it under those rules, which I don't think we believe they can, then they would be able to do it under our rules. We look to the state classifications on this.
So, I guess I would, to me, that seems like a bit of a loophole, and whether, we may want to look into that, whether we approve this tonight or not.
Yeah, I could follow up on that, but I, yeah, I haven't followed.
I believe that the dispensary on the north end of town, I believe I've heard a couple of times that there's a testing laboratory there that is in the vicinity, but not the same business as.
Again, I don't know what they're doing there.
Chief, there was one there, but it's moved.
Oh, okay.
It is still in our town, but that's kind of, I guess, the point. It's here and it's really near, and
Is that the one that moved to the urban growth center?
No.
No, it's inside town.
Inside town, okay. So, and then again, one other question. Under section four, item seven, medical marijuana dispensaries and recreational marijuana retailers are not required to comply with section eight dash 448, three in parentheses. I wasn't sure what you were referring to.
I think that's taking them out of the business license requirement. So, let me take, take me back a page. Section seven
Section four, parentheses, seven. What page is that on?
Page, actually, it's the last page.
Okay.
I'm still on page.
Well, the last page of the work, so I'm looking to find it back there.
I'm going to
There it is, right there.
448, three. So, let's see what 448 is.
Did you find that one?
That's why I'm going to watch it.
Let me see if I
You're getting close, Karen.
I'm not hearing it, sorry, I was just, I'm sorry. What we're going to do here is that if, if we can take care of those questions, we can just take care of it, we can do this, you know, not have to bring back the door pages.
I, yeah, I have to.
You're okay with that? Just take a moment here.
I'm going to stay here.
Oh, there's The, it's highly
You got it, chief?
Yeah, I believe it's the owner's
The owner's
Okay.
Oh, that goes over.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
It's the owner mitigation.
Okay.
It's the owner mitigation.
Did you get that? Yeah, could you, could you say that?
I'm sorry, that's the provision that requires owner mitigation, so those are the two facilities that we've exempted from that.
Okay, all right, makes sense. Thank you for following up on that. If everybody's okay, I don't hear anybody yelling or screaming. Karen, you have appropriate language to
I casted out earlier.
Oh, thank you. I, do I, do you not love me anymore? I don't have a piece of
No, I think I have
Somebody, you might can take a look.
You're not probably going to hold on this.
Well, okay, I just want to make sure that
No.
Thank you.
I believe that you're so welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, since this is an ordinance, this is your
I would be happy to start it off.
Please do.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2017 dash 06 in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Second. I have a motion, second, is there discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, the motion carries.
An ordinance amending chapter eight, article 12, marijuana businesses of the Independence Municipal Code.
Okay, the second motion?
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2017 dash 06 for the second time by title.
Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries.
An ordinance amending chapter eight, article 12, marijuana businesses of the Independence Municipal Code.
Dan, you want to read?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill number 2017 dash 06.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second by Counselor? Is there a second, is there any discussion? Do you have what you said? Come again? No. Here we go, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Thank you very much.
The bill has passed and will be assigned ordinance number 1561.
Okay. Any council announcements before I do the executive session reading?
Yes. I will not be here for the November 6th meeting. I have been asked to speak at a broadband conference in Atlanta.
And that is a big national conference.
It is a big national conference, and I've been asked to speak because I have the unique perspective of having watched the complete development of the business and then working for it.
Great. Anything else? If not, the Independent City Council meeting will now meet the executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transaction pursuant to O R S 1926602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically threatened not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision can be made in the executive session. At this time, the council will adjourn the conference room for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session is adjourned, we will return to open session in the council chambers. Any decision from the
Will return to open session the council chambers, and any decision from the executive session will be deliberated at this time. It is not anticipated, for those in the audience, we do not anticipate, Mr. Klein, or we, you don't, we don't anticipate any action other than adjournment.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, everybody okay? All right, let's go to the executive session, then dinner.